Good job. Roll call, please, Ms. Starnes.
District one, Darrell Jeter.
Here.
District two, Michelle Glover.
Here.
District three, Eddie Skeen.
Here.
District four, Michael Bricky.
Here.
District five, Danny Castile.
Here.
District six, Chris Manus.
Here.
At large, Stephanie Ag.
Here.
You all should have had a chance to look at the agenda, Ms. Starnes and Mr. V. Are there any changes, additions, deletions?
I do have one addition, Mr. Chairman. I would like to add a discussion about topics discussed during closed session at last meeting. Just the topics, not the details.
We'll leave that for number fifteen, Board of Supervisors comments, is that okay?
Fine.
Do we have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Jeter made the motion, he's the second.
I see.
Remain a second. Own favor.
I see.
Opposed. Prove the agenda and the minutes. You should have had a chance to look at the minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one correction. Discussion at the last meeting about animal control, Peanut Marshall was mentioned in that discussion, and it was actually another person, not Peanut Marshall from Nicholsville. So I would ask if that be removed.
Okay.
It has to stay in the minutes because that's what was said, but you can correct today that that was the wrong name.
Okay. Okay, do we have a motion to accept the amended minutes?
I'm amended.
They're not amended, we accept it to accept the minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Ms. Glover made a motion, we have to say it.
I will.
Own favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Prove the minutes. Let me find this here now. We've got a new computer system and... I'm not too good on computers. We go into citizens' expression, and there is a statement here I need to read before citizens' expression. Citizens' expression period is a point in the meeting when anyone who wishes to address the board may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium and state your name, where you're from in the county, and are what organization you represent. The board may or may not respond to anything you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one is signed up to speak, we have no particular order. We ask that you take turns and speak your business. Any action will be considered after we close citizens' expression. Ms. Starnes, anyone sign up this morning?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Do we have anyone who wants to address the board?
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
Every September, the county hosts a Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day. This year, that date is Saturday, September fourteenth, from nine AM to three PM. It'll be held at the Gate City Municipal Parking Lot, AKA the Flea Market Parking Lot here in town. So there's a whole list of things that you may want to bring out, that you may consider hazardous, paint, aerosols, there's a whole list, so if you're in doubt, bring it out. Anyone has any questions, they can find a flyer on our county website, or call here at the county office for more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jeter. Is anyone else?
They'll beat me this morning. Good morning. Peggy Thomas from Snowflake Road, and I'm here about the roads. Snowflake Road, not only Snowflake Road, but all the dirt roads in Scott County. And I called in a few work orders last Monday, and Jeff got back with them this morning as I was getting ready to leave for the meeting, that's why I was a little bit late, but, and you can hear back there now, so thank y'all for that. And the dirt roads, you're either, they're in bad shape, either washboards, speed bumps, bushes, potholes, whatever, on all dirt roads. I'm here for Snowflake Road, which you know. And I see, and I'm not only thinking about me having to drive on that road, but it's the buses, the mail people, FedEx, UPS. And let me get through here, and vehicles are really expensive now, and when you go bouncing through on them dirt roads, you know it's doing some damage. And I'm really wanting to, I guess, talk to Mr. Kilgore, or whoever is in charge that can give us more money allotted for dirt roads. I mean, not only Snowflake Road, but all dirt roads in Scott County. And I want to thank you all for all that you all do, and this is your six-year plan. And then another question that has been asked, you know, how, why do some of the roads get paved that's not even been on the six-year plan? And let's see, it does not... I'm trying, I'm just jumping around and in, it's always, everybody mentions the riverfront property in Scott County. Something needs to be done about the riverfront property. So, but I thank you all for what all y'all do, and keep us on the six-year plan. Thank you.
We really sympathize with you and the people on the dirt roads. Every time I've been to Richmond, and there's been a meeting by VDOT, I've tried to go and the other people have too. And when you go into those meetings in Richmond, and I think that's where the problem is, they talk about, you go, well, from personal experience, you go up eighty-one, hit seventy-seven, and hit fifty-eight toward Martinsville, there's millions and millions of dollars going in that mountain. And I've heard that almost every bridge and tunnel around Newport News, the coast where our naval station is, is being worked on. Now, I'm no conspiracy theorist, maybe a little bit, but when they're trying to beef up stuff so that our military, our naval people can get down to their ships, you know, I hate to even throw that out there, who knows? But the money is on the East Coast and Northern Virginia, and just look at that road, fifty-eight across one of these days if you're up in there. It's unbelievable.
Do I need to go to Richmond?
Well, we go once or twice a year, and we all, we've talked, the last two times we've been, we've talked to the head man.
Okay.
Over the whole thing.
I will say that we're discussing how to get the pool bigger, so the bigger pie for everybody to share in, so that's been discussed.
Thank you.
I want you to know, we do sympathize with you. We're with you.
Well, I'd like to take them on this dirt road. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm here concerning Katrin Towne.
Your name?
Up in East Carter's Valley.
Name?
Joseph Katrin.
Okay.
I sent in a request to VDOT. It's a... Let's see, let me find that number. It's about straightening the curve in Venus Branch Road, Road seven-seven-nine off East Carter's Valley Road. And they said that in order to have the road straightened, to contact the local border supervisors, and that's where we're at today. But I sent Michelle an email of this work order, and told her what was going on, and I took some pictures and sent her also.
Yes.
And it's just a bad curve. There's a culvert that goes under the road, where the branch comes down through there, and then a culvert that comes back across the road to take the creek, one side of the road, back to the other side of the road, and then the creek on down to the main creek that goes under Venus Branch. It just seems to me that you could do away with those culverts that's traveling under the road and straighten the road out. You might have to take a little bit of the property that's on the right side of the road to do that, but is there any way we could get an engineer to go out there and look at it?
I think that would be our next step, is to take them out there and let them look at it, just like we went up to Boozy Creek when we were looking at Boozy Creek, but I think that's our next step, is to go up there and to look at that road and to help you all.
I'm sure Michelle will work for you, but you know as well as I do, the wheels turn slow. It took me four years and down to be able to get a culvert replaced.
Well, that's on the schedule to be paved next year. I was just hoping that we could get it straightened before they paved it, because we'd just be shooting our sif in the foot if we didn't.
That's right, Michelle, we need to get on that, yeah.
Also, there's concerns about the grass growing up on the side of the road in East Carter's Valley. That Johnson grass, it grows really fast, and you try to see around some of those curves to see somebody coming, you might be too late or see a deer that jumps out in front of you.
Right, except we all over the county, I notice they just go...
Also, seven-oh-two that goes over into Tennessee off East Carter's Valley Road, the right of way is really grown over. When I go through there with my car, we just bought a new Toyota, and it'll switch from dark, from light to dark on the GPS. It is so dark going through there, it's like a tunnel where it's grown over the road. I'm just concerned about this winter, when maybe if we get heavy snow files, that you're gonna have a bunch of trees then in the road.
Michelle, you agree with that?
I'm not, but I will. I will.
Which also, you had the equipment up there when you paved seven-oh-five that goes into Spring Valley subdivision. I can't understand why you didn't go ahead and pave the seven-oh-two that was right up the road, the main road that goes into Tennessee.
They did pave the Fleming Road, that's what they did.
And what's really destroying that road is where the water comes out of that road that turns right at that church up there, it's coming right down the road, it's going across the road, going down through there, coming back across the road, and then back across the road again, on down through there, the ditch lines are stopped up. I mean, the water's what's destroying the road.
What we can do is, let's get together, you and I, we'll get in touch with VDOT, get them on one day, come out, and we'll take them all over, Carter's Valley, seven-oh-two, all those roads, let them look at it with us and see what they can do for us.
Okay, thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome. I'll be in touch with you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
No problem.
Is there anyone else for public expression?
Gary Baker, Boozy Creek. Appreciate your all's work on everything, and especially with VDOT, and Michelle, and Eddie's, and Danny's, and all of yourself, and I know up our way, the VDOT has left out after the meeting last time and didn't come back till yesterday, so I don't know if they've got this down pat or not, but anyway, we, we, we need to work with VDOT on this stuff. I know they're doing a good job up there, but I talked to one of the fellows up there yesterday, and they started in at Overland Drive, right in front of Overland Drive, and digging out those ditches, which they're doing a great job, ain't no question about that, and the culverts. But during this last rain, we got two and a half inches there last week, and about a quarter mile up the road, if I'd have just started a quarter mile up the road, they would've got the ditches dug out where they really needed to be, because it was just like a river coming down that road, and that's, like this gentleman said, these culverts are being stopped up, and the ditch lines, I know y'all can't do nothing about this, but, you know, we just got to put it out here, and on camera, and for the newspapers and stuff, but, and that boy told me, he said, EPA wouldn't let, said it's just certain times a year that the EPA would even let them, they may not. Now, this is ridiculous, because now, I know Tennessee is a state in the union, just like Virginia is. Tennessee can come in there and they can dig out their ditches, and they're gone. Jeter knows that. And they'll, they dug out all them ditches on Riddick Creek up there, and replaced the culverts, and then they turned around and paved it about six inches deep. Now, how can Tennessee do this with just a sales tax? And we've got a sales tax, plus income tax, and everything else. Worrying the world is our money gone. Somebody needs to ask that question, that's what I'm doing. I appreciate everyone, VDOT's doing the best they can with what they've got, they ought to be, they ought to be back in the county like it was back in old times. Kane took all that away from us, on account of wanting contractors. Y'all know this, I ain't telling you nothing you don't know. And he used that for his social programs, which that's, that's the name of the game, if you're in charge. So, anyway.
Gary, I agree with everything you're saying.
I know you, I can't do nothing, but we got to get this out here some way, and other than that's why I'm here. But, another thing I want to touch on real quick, is farm use. As being a farmer in the county, I ain't representing nobody but myself and some of these other guys back here that I was asking about, we'd like to see it. And you don't need the five acres and a house site where land is, period. And if y'all need somebody in here to come and talk to you about it, that can be arranged so that everybody in here will know exactly what it is. Jeter knows what it is, he's tried to get it before and come up short on it. That's the only thing I'm trying to do, is, is trying to help the farmers in this county. And all this other bologna about them putting back on the tractors and all that stuff, well that would be like committing suicide in this county. Y'all can't do that. Them old boys took that off back in the sixties, and that, we can put that stuff back on. Anyway, thank you for your time, I appreciate everything that you all do for us, and we'd like to get some of this stuff done. We've got a good board here, and y'all, I think, are trying to work together, and that's what we need in this county. Thank you, Mike, I appreciate it.
Thank you. About four years ago, Gary, VDOT was here and told us that they had a machine that they were going to bring to the county that was supposed to clean out ditch lines and culverts. Well, it went two or three years, and I asked about it, and they said that they were going to, and I can't remember the name of the little animal that they would kill in the ditch line, but the EPA stopped them, and that machine didn't make it. I even asked about that in Richmond, Darrell, you may remember that.
But you know, you know much what's pitiful about it. Tennessee can do it. What is wrong with Virginia?
I don't have the answer, I don't know.
And you know, these things that we bring up here in, in the county, like this citizens' expression, back in the old days, them supervisors would sit here and address this in front of the county residents, not in behind closed doors. You fellas need, if some of these citizens brings up something, address it right then.
Mr. Baker?
Thanks.
Could I say something to you? I see exactly everything that you said, I believe it one hundred percent, because I remember them things, same as you. I think if the ditches was cleaned out, and I heard the snail daughter, that's the one I hear, if the ditches was cleaned out, there wouldn't be water there for the snail daughter.
That's exactly right, Dan.
And I've heard that one, because I've tried to get Highway sixty-five some ditches cleaned, and they told me there wasn't but two or three months out of the year that they could clean the ditches. Now, I was raised over next to the state line myself, and Tennessee can go clean a ditch and it's like nothing, and I see it the same way you do it, I see it but one way. That's excuse to not to clean them.
Yeah.
Now, that's my personal.
They use that money somewhere else, Danny, and I don't know what in the world they're done with. I remember one time, let me tell you this real quick, I remember one time I was at a meeting in Richmond, here sitting all these guys around the table, and three or four of them was talking about, well, Lord, we can't send that money down to Southwest Virginia. Boy, I flogged their hind end on the counter, but, because we deserve it, just like the rest of them do.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else for public expression this morning?
Good morning, everybody, good to be here. I just wanted to tell you something, you don't know.
Name, please.
This is Charlie Taylor, my, I live in Philbrook, Russell Highways, he's just a side of the federal road. This is a railroad, but I drive seventeen miles three times a week to church. Five miles is in Scott County, I'm a remaining twelve is in Washington County. Washington County secondary roads are just as bad as ours. You miss a pothole up there, you get a go on it. But I think we need to build a R under, Terry Kilgore, because this thing starts in Richmond. You guys are ready to watch what you can do. So I think we need to build a R under, Terry Kilgore gets something going in Richmond. So just want to let you know that I always Scott County. Thank you all, and y'all have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, please?
My name's Catherine Stallard, and I live on Big Moccasin. And since my first talking here at the last meeting, I've had all kinds of messages on my Facebook Messenger, and a lot of people wanted to be here today, but at nine o'clock in the morning, they're at work, and couldn't, couldn't get the day off work. First of all, I want to make a correction from my last speaking, the four horses that were abandoned beside of my house was not, I meant to say Pee-wee Marshall, and I said Peanut. It started with P, so it was a Pee-wee Marshall. And the case on Jeff Burton that I never got to go to, that wasn't his first offense of abusing dogs, but the reason's not, you know, when those dogs are taken, he goes to the shelter and gets more, because his aunt is the one that answers the phone at the shelter, so he can get all the dogs to abuse that he wants. I had a lady contact me, that she has called Animal Control, Bill Digness, and Frida Starnes for over a year, about a little fifteen-pound dog chained out twenty-four-seven. And there's, you know, there's laws in Virginia, you cannot leave a dog chained out twenty-four-seven, rain, snow, sleet, or hail, out in a hundred-degree heat, and it's sixty-one-seventy-nine East Carter's Valley. And, I mean, we've got to start enforcing the laws, the animal laws of Virginia. I mean, if I had to go through the Virginia Federation of Humane Societies, PETA, Kingsport Times, Channel eleven, TV, Channel five, something's, you know, if my tax money goes for animal control to enforce the law, that's what I want done. Thank you for your time.
Ma'am, every, every one of us, each supervisor has talked with the animal patrol officer this weekend. Later in the agenda, under unfinished business, that will be addressed, okay?
Right.
Anyone else? Anyone else for public expression? Will close public expression?
Mr. Chairman, get out, comment, something, Mr. Baker mentioned something about the land use. We had a little discussion about this yesterday. In Scott County, what is the current acreage that is required for land use qualification? I think you said two-hundred, is that correct?
That was what we said.
I did contact Washington County, Virginia Commissioner yesterday, Commissioner's Office, and Russell County. Now, would theirs be any different than theirs requirements for land use?
I don't know.
That, you think it would be the same?
I don't see what would be different.
Would each county have their own thing, or would...
I don't know.
Well, anyway, in Washington and Russell County, it's five acres required for land use, and twenty acres if it's wooded, and you have one acre to that if it's a house site, so that'd be six and twenty-one with the house site. So I just wanted to correct that. I don't see how Scott County could be any different than those two counties. That's all I have.
I have one more concern. What was your name?
Bill Digness.
Bill Digness and I spoke earlier, this month or last month, the trash site in Carter's Valley, East Carter's Valley Road, we were concerned about Tennessee trash coming over there, and him and I suggested maybe that we could, when people paid their taxes, give them a card where they could scan an automatic gate for it to open and close, that way we could keep the Tennessee trash out there. Because I go over and take my trash over there on Monday, and it is cram-packed full and running over, where people come over there on Saturday and fill it up from Tennessee. So, I'm just concerned about the Tennessee trash. It's costing us money that we could put on the roads or whatever else we want to put it on.
Right.
Appreciate it.
And if every one of us agrees with Tennessee and Lee County, that building, that's something we've been working on.
And that's something that we are discussing. We have a waste committee that myself and Danny are on, as well as Bill and Frida too, and some other gentlemen that are on it with us, and we are discussing this. You know, we have a lot of, you know, several sites that have Tennessee trash coming into them, and we are in discussion with what can we do? Can we put up sliding gates, you know, to help us keep that out? You know, we've got people coming in, and, and they're going through the trash, and we've got to stop that, and, and we've got people coming in and stealing the metal. You know, the metal that we've got at these sites, we have used in our budget for income coming in, and people going into these sites and they're stealing the metal, then guess what that's taking away from us? That's taking away money from the budget that we have allotted out to, you know, help us with our budget. So, that is one thing that we are discussing, and we just recently had a meeting, and we talked about the sliding gates, and we're looking into what it would cost us, and we're looking into, you know, maybe using five sites as, you know, doing those first, just to see if it does work. But that's, we are in talks about, you know, Tennessee trash coming into it, I promise you that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I said, I said, Mr. Katrin, I've suggested putting a camera up there, and that way we could watch them, and have somebody monitor them, but I've got nowhere with that when I spoke. I've also been told people taking hooks and getting into the trash and getting the personal things out there. I have brought that up two times to the Sheriff's Department, and they say they're working on it for the last couple of months.
on it for the last couple of months. I caught three in one week myself. And me and Mr. Skeens was at a place the other night, and there was a lady. She wasn't too shy before we got through throwing her stuff out, before we pulled out, she was with a flashlight. Now, they have a lot of things going on around the trash cans, and we're pretty much aware of it, okay? And I don't want any people here to see that don't think we ain't working on it. Only thing is, I've said we're not getting nothing done, and I don't know why we're not getting it done. Because it's sure been spoken about, okay?
Jeff mentioned maybe starting with the human East Carter's Valley sites, putting the automatic gates, because that's where most Tennessee trash is coming from.
Well, I'd say Jeter's area doesn't argue, but gets a very lot, a very good bunch too. Anytime that's state line, I guess they don't want to pay a trash bill. So they sneak over whenever they think they can get away with it and do it. And something else I'd like to say, we should pay $11,700 a year to educate the kids that's coming from Tennessee. Now, I'm worried about both sides, but I can't see why that we don't have any kind of charges for tuition for the Tennessee kids that come in here and being educated. That's another expense that I, that if you go to Tennessee schools, and I know you're very aware of it because you was raised next to the state line. If you lived in Virginia and you go to Tennessee, you pay a tuition. Now, I've been told this. I don't know this. They said nothing that we can do can change it, but the school board members that's elected is the one has to do that. So I want the people to know that I've talked to, I'm blue in the face about it, but I've still got nowhere with that issue either. I cannot sit here on this board and make the citizens of Scott County pay more taxes when we're giving the Tennessee people a free ride.
Amen.
That's all I've got to say about it. But thank each and every one of you coming, and I do listen to everything of each and every one of y'all that talks about, and most of you pretty much explains it, fits it right on the line. And I'm sure the rest of us listens too.
Thank you, Mr. Kestrel. We'll go out of public expression and on to public hearings. This public hearing is for the possible adoption of amendments to the Scott County, Virginia zoning ordinance to amend Section 300-113 miscellaneous uses to add solar generation facility utility scale and Section 600-200.13 miscellaneous use types to add definitions for solar facilities. Decommissioning solar generation facility small and solar generation facility utility scale. Before we begin the public hearing, let me just say that this is continued from the last meeting. And what we're talking about today is for all of Scott County. It's not one general section. I met with three citizens from Nicholsville one day last week, I believe it was, for about an hour and hour and a half, and listened to their concerns about the Nicholsville area. I think everyone here agrees, this is for the whole county. And right now, the county doesn't have any control, doesn't have any ordinances at all. At this point in time, a solar business could come in, and we don't have anything to control them at all. This is for the whole county, what we're talking about today. And if we pass this, and a solar company wants to come into Nicholsville, Clinchport, Raco, wherever, then they will go to the planning commission, and then each community will have an opportunity to talk to the planning commission, and then that comes on to the board. So today, all we're, this is for the county as a whole. So keep that in mind, and if you think one is possibility of it coming to your area, get your facts in order and go that route. Okay, we'll open the public hearing for possible adoption of these amendments. Anyone need to speak?
What's this for?
It's to put ordinance and regulations in place for any solar farm that might be interested in coming to Scott County. And there has been some interest in the Nicholsville area, and I think the Raco area. And right now, we don't have any laws, we don't have any regulations to control this. And what I'm hearing is if they come in, they'll be there for 30 years. And what we're trying to put into place is, at the end of that 30 years, who pays to have it taken away? The laws, the setback rules, the, we're trying to put into place everything that will involve a solar farm coming in to Scott County if ever. And this is for the whole county. Anyone wish to speak on this?
Should we, was there anyone, citizens wanting to? Sorry, I want to make sure they get through. Go ahead first.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Board Supervisors. My name is Ben Wilson. I work for a nonprofit, I guess I'm from Roanoke, Virginia is where I'm based, but work for a nonprofit, Energy Right. We are Virginia-based and have been operating as a nonprofit in the energy space since 2022, operating in about 70 counties, hoping to grow that as we expand our engagement into South Coast Virginia. We, back when this was first brought to consideration, well, actually before I go there, Energy Right is a conservative nonprofit trying to bring forth a conservative perspective in the renewable energy conversation. We recognize the environmental benefits of renewable energy, but we really want to drive home the point of economic benefits and really share a voice for property owners. So we are advocates for landowner rights, small landowners to big landowners, ensuring that they have the capacity to do as they wish with their land, to generate that economic benefit, both for themselves but also for their community. And we believe that that property right fact is, has been in the past and will continue to be the cornerstone of American economic growth, and it's something that we want to see rural Virginia continue to engage in. And one way that those landowners can do that is by using their land to generate revenue for themselves and the county through renewable energy. But we are committed to responsible renewable energy development. And that means specific setbacks, like was mentioned, you know, considerations regarding vegetation, the way they're constructed, all of those things are very important and must be considered during that process of special use permits, et cetera. But a county, to your point, chairman is, you know, has to have regulation on the books that ensures that every time that conversation starts, there's somewhere to start that conversation from that's in line across the county, but provides somewhere a foundation for the community to work from. Whether it be, you know, increasing the height of trees, increasing or decreasing setbacks, you know, judging density of other projects in an area, all of that has to start from somewhere, and your ordinance does just that. Not only does it protect the right for community members to have a seat at the table when these projects come to a vote, to your point, Mr. Baker, to be able to bring their concerns that they've researched and thought heartily about to the community, to the public hearing. Not only is that important and does your ordinance protect for that, but it does not go beyond what is necessary in regulation, therefore hurting landowners. One thing we see across the Commonwealth of Virginia is ordinances that are very reactive and sometimes maybe based in misinformation, and they go beyond what's necessary to make decisions that benefit both small and large landowners. And so when you see excessive setbacks, you know, put in these ordinances, you rule out individuals who have smaller parcels of land and may want to utilize the land for this type of development on a smaller scale. And so what your ordinance does, and the purpose of me being here today is to support that ordinance, it sets the groundwork for future conversation. But it allows the county leadership, you all, the planning commission, county staff, the capacity to judge each project on its merits, decide how does this project, this developer interact with the community? How do they benefit the community? What role have they played and will they play moving forward in both the county's economic benefit, but also the kind of prosperity of the community for which the project is located in? And so your ordinance does exactly that. It opens the door for this conversation, allows you as the board of supervisors to make those adjustments based on community's concerns, but it also commits these developers to community engagement. You have a specific line in your ordinance that requires that community meeting, which is paramount. At our organization, we believe that these decisions start and end with the community, and the concerns of the community must be considered. And your ordinance does just that. It allows for that conversation to occur. And so our organization, we usually love to be a part of this conversation early and often. Unfortunately, I was brought on the team just a few months ago, and so we weren't able to really expand our action here in the South Coast Virginia up until recently. But moving forward, we want to be a resource, not only as you continue to navigate maybe potential amendments to your ordinance, but as you consider projects, we want to be able to provide you facts and resources that have defined our work and have defined the positive and responsible development of renewable energy across the Commonwealth. So that's really all I have to say. At the end of the day, I hope that you will, to your point, get this on the books so that moving forward, the entire county has something to stand on, to defend and start this conversation. I'll leave my card with whoever, so that if you have any questions or concerns that would like to meet with our organization, we would love to do that in the future. But I appreciate your work and your time in really considering this over the past few months, both you, the planning commission, and county staff, and really look forward to working with you all in the future to continue having these conversations about positive, responsible renewable energy development. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Anyone else wish to speak? We will close the public hearing and ask if there's anything that supervisors need to say or recommend.
I will make a couple statements. Of course, I live in Nicholsville, so I've had an opportunity to talk to several citizens. And I think we could have handled it differently and been better from the outset, but I did have had an opportunity to meet with people, including the person that did the Washington County ordinance, and also Mr. Wilson yesterday. And he assured me that the ordinance that we're discussing today would allow for future negotiation with landowners once the project has been identified. And from his past experience, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Wilson, you felt like landowners can negotiate with the developer of the project?
Yes, well, same as, so that you can see as I speak, but the, you know, the way this works is landowners and developers come to an agreement on that, but your ordinance provides for community meetings and community engagement. So the real kind of meat to all of this is, how does the community outside of that landowner also feel about this? And so really encouraging those developers to engage, we see that that leads to the best projects upcoming. You know, at the end of the day, you're never going to be able to meet, you know, we spoke about this, 100% of community demands. That's a part of it. You'll never be able to do that in any aspect of anything, really, but especially not economic development. But when you encourage developers like your ordinance does to have those community meetings, hear the concerns in a structured and, you know, obviously cordial way, you see much better progress, and that's what your ordinance does. It provides for those concerns to be heard, and those to be worked through with the developer and the landowner.
And in our discussion, I also think that the ordinance can be amended. It's not set in stone forever, so it can be amended in the future. Is that, that is corrected?
Well, I understand, in the same way that you're amending the ordinance now, we'll be able to amend the ordinance in the future.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, anyone else?
There's been a lot of conversation around this, but, you know, like he said, you know, we have tried to balance the rights of the landowner versus the community and everything. I think we've come to a good compromise with this ordinance, that it closes it down from what it is right now. You know, if they roll bulldozers in before we take a vote, there's really not much we can do.
It protects the county, and it protects the people that's in the county. It protects us.
Yeah, I think that's important to know, but it also balances, so we can make progress and that we can be a little bit more energy independent. You know, Scott County doesn't have any coal. We have very little coal, very little natural gas. We really don't have the means of generating our own electricity. This gives us something that we don't have, a little bit of independence. And I for one appreciate having that little bit of independence.
Anyone else?
You don't even want to have solar companies coming in and buying up land, are you?
No. Okay, is there any, any motion or further conversation?
I'll make a motion that we pass this as is.
Mr. May has made the motion. Is there a second?
Oh, sir.
Mr. Jeter, second. All in favor, say the clap of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much for all the comments. We'll move on to unfinished business, and the Starnes will address Scott County Courthouse.
This is continued from last month as well. That's why we have it under unfinished business. We did meet with Mosley Architects after our last meeting, when you wanted to scale down the project that was presented last month. For the Sally Court and the inmate holding, we have a new estimated cost of $2,621,900. This information is on your tablet as well as the previous quote. I've talked to each of you in depth about the project and that this is our immediate need at the courthouse due to our inmate holding situation currently. So if you have any questions, let me know. The cost, again, you know, is 2.6 million. I have worked with Davenport on how to finance the project. They've suggested a 13-year note. Rates right now with BRA and some private banking is running 3.5% to 4.5% financing. Debt service would be an estimated $260,000 a year. You do receive regional improvement commission funds that will continue to increase as the Bristol Casino and Hard Rock becomes a full operating facility. So that money could be used for the debt service yearly, not using taxpayer, local taxpayer dollars to fund the project.
Let me give a little background of the reason that we've talked about this. Probably two or three years ago, we talked about renovating the courthouse and doing a Sally Court. Now, a Sally Court, when inmates have walked from Duffield to the courthouse, they have been walking through their possible victims. It's been very dangerous for that to happen. There's been no way for prisoners to come into the courthouse protected or the public protected. But those estimates, and I think it's around 28 million to 30 million plus.
28 to 36.
Yeah, 28 to 36 million. So we, as a group, the board of supervisors, decided to do away with that. We can't, we can't afford it. And right now, we've got, is it called a Conex box?
It is.
There's a Conex box sitting back behind the old library, and it just looks like a tractor and trailer box sitting back there. And right now, they're bringing prisoners from Duffield, they're keeping them in the Conex box and bringing them on in to court, which is not safe either. They're outside. And with this, with the new, new Mosley process and fixing a way to get inmates in there safely, this is, the interest rate on this is real good. The cost, 2.6, 2, 1 million is much less than 28 to 30 to 36 million. So this is a good alternative. We had talked about making more room for the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, who projects that their, the people that work in there is going to increase drastically over the next few years. But this proposal saves room beside of the courthouse. But this proposal saves room beside of the courthouse for down the road, you know, 10, 15, 20 years, whenever we need to build, or somebody needs to build, it won't be us. There's room to do that, so that's been taken into consideration, too. If you drive up behind the courthouse, the old jails are gone. The very old jail that's here, the first jail probably, is gone, and then the other one that was back there is gone. And they've done a good job that, back there, so we've got room to develop in the future. And I'm talking, you know, way down the road. But right now, you know, I don't want to put any ideas in everybody's mind, it's up to everybody, but I think this is a, it's a safety measure, really, to get these, these people coming out of the jail into the courthouse safely. Frida mentioned the casino, and I've been saying for a long time now that regional efforts, regional money coming into our county means more to us now than ever. There's, there's a casino which is going to grow. There's a project intersection in Norton. I went up there a few weeks ago when the governor was up there, and that, Johns, back there, that place is, is going to bring Scott County and the whole area a lot of money. It's unbelievable to ride up on top of that hill. You go up there at the Walmart in Norton and drive, and it's going to be great, and we get money from that. There's other things in southwest Virginia, regionally, that, that we're going to get money from. So being in the school system, I know what Mr. Castile was talking about, and I know that eventually, our schools are all over 50 years old. And any education class you set in, they say 50 years is the life of a public building. Eventually, we're going to have to have new schools. And I'm not saying next week, next month, next year, but in 15, 20, 25 years, we're going to have to do something because we're putting too much money into our older schools. And people don't want to hear consolidation, that's a no-no word in Scott County. But in doing, in doing the courthouse, we're trying to look ahead. We don't need to say we're going to spend $36 million on a new courthouse. We need to go as low as we can, and Frida does a great job in getting out and talking to these people. Davenport is our financial advisors in Richmond, and, and I trust those people, know them individually, and they do a great job. And they and Mosley have figured this out, and I personally think it might be a good way to go, but...
Do we have any comments?
Do we need a motion or anything to come out of this, or is this just?
Yes, before we can move forward, we need to know that the board is going to move forward with the project. We have a Mosley agreement that would take us through construction. That was for the project that I presented to you all last month, so their estimate will go down based on the scope of the project, and it can be added into the cost of the project. But I just, if you want to do the project, I do need to know that where we can have Mosley do final drawings and renderings before, you know, we get to that point for construction.
Mr. Castile?
Because I don't want to sign that contract and spend the money for A&E if I know when we get there, you're not going to do the project.
Agreed.
Okay, we discussed that, and you said that building was probably 3,000 square feet?
Yes, sir.
And y'all, we discussed what, 2.65 thousand dollars, 2,650,000. So by the time we get through, we'll be closer to 3 million probably cost.
With all fees, yes.
With all fees.
Yeah.
How much did you say yesterday that it's going to cost a square foot?
It's estimated, of course, this is just a rough estimate, and once we get to that point with inflation, you know, it may change. They're estimating $550 a square foot, which would be 1.7, 1,782,000. And then you would have site construction, 300,000, and then other costs, you know, you've got to do your design and all that.
In other words, it's going to cost probably a thousand dollars a square foot by the time it's all finished in downtown. Time, 3 million dollars.
It wouldn't be that much.
Okay.
Would it be closer to 750?
Probably about, yeah, 694 is what they have for site construction and the expansion. The square feet is 694, and then they figure 150 square feet. Like I said, this is on your tablet, at $30 a square for $5,000. Construction testing and special inspections, which is 1% of the construction cost, is 21,000. A&E interior design services, 10% of the construction cost, which is 209,000, and then a couple of other, you know, smaller items that they have listed. But like I said, this is a rough estimate right now. Until you go out to bid, you don't know what your final numbers are going to be.
Also, I've been different places, and I've seen prisoners before, okay? That's, to me, pretty high for a square footage of the building. I know a lot of prisoners, that judge sees them on cameras instead of bringing them to court. Has anybody ever thought of that option?
We have that ability now to do a video.
Could that one be an option instead of building the sale?
That's the judge's decision, and they don't utilize that system very much, but we did spend money to have that availability at the courthouse, and we do have that currently.
I was just going to see if anybody had thought of anything like that, because I've seen them before on camera, and the judge talks to them. And I'm just going to pace that now for everybody to think about that, that, you talked about the casino money. You know, to me, I've heard the word that that's free money. Now, that was money that I don't think is free, it was given to the county for the have the casino up there. If we take from one fund, somewhere later in a few years, it's going to cost us somewhere else. But have y'all thought of any other options besides, as y'all call it, a Sally Court? I call it a container, all from a ship, shipping is what it is. Have you ever thought of, or anybody here, has anybody ever thought of, of any other way to build a cheaper building than what, roughly $265,000? But I mean, to me, I think that's a little overboard for the size of building that we're receiving.
Mr. Castile, we talked yesterday, you and I and other people, to compare the square footage of a public building like this with a regular home. I've been told by builders that to build a home now is around 350 to 400 dollars a square foot. So if you're building a new home, get ready. And, and the other thing about finding a different way, this has been rassled around. Bill's worked with it, Frida's worked with it, you know, these engineers have looked, and I suggested something yesterday that, that didn't fly. So we, we've thought about everything, not, we, the whole group has.
Wow.
And I don't know of any other way.
Well, we could use the Daisy Compton building for some of it, but that has been shot down pretty thoroughly by Commonwealth attorney, so that's probably not a go.
And we're going to try to get the use of the, the old library. If, if the judge agrees to it, then we can use that.
They had had that conversation, and he said no. And he gave some good reasons, actually, that I wasn't aware of. Sometimes there's two judges at the courthouse, which he needs office space away from, they're basically taking his office if there's two judges. He said during divorce proceedings, where they needed privacy, they needed his office for that purpose, so he could go to the library to get over, to get out of the way.
Okay. So that's...
And he did recommend the Judge Gilchrist. He mentioned the security fence, which we talked a little bit about that. Ms. Starnes didn't think that was the best option, rather than the Sally Court, just having fenced area, secured area.
That leaves it open?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, yeah, that wouldn't be, I don't know about that.
Mr. Jeremy, you'd still have to have the holding cells, and that infrastructure, that would be under roof anyway, so the addition of the Sally Court onto this compared to a fenced-in area, is a lot of gain for whatever cost just for the bait.
Right.
You still building the, the holding cells.
I think Mr. Castile had a good point on the remote, through video. Was it, has any of that been done?
That is installed at the courthouse. The judge does not utilize it.
It's at his discretion.
Yeah, we cannot make him do that.
You don't see that changing?
No, I don't. The same is with the library building. He's not going to give that up. He's not going to do video.
Same, same. Same judge. How much money is the state providing? Or is the state managing the funds to bail it up?
There's also a hearing room at the regional jail that arrangements could be done, but I don't think it's utilized either.
I don't think there's any national funds from the state, and it'll all be regional.
It's the locality's responsibility.
It's our responsibility. It's unfortunate.
More discussion?
Did you hear that?
Sorry, sorry, I mumbled a little bit.
Did you hear that?
I did.
It's, it's locally that we have to do it. It's not by state. State's not going to help us fund this, so it has to come locally. We don't want to use the taxpayers' money in this. That's one thing we don't want to do. That's why Frida has brought this option up to us to, to use the lottery money to...
The casino money.
The casino money, sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. The casino money to help us with, you know, doing this.
And possibly any regional money in the future.
Yeah, and it's, it's needed. I mean, it's, it's needed, really bad.
Any further discussion of the board, or does anybody have a motion to allow Ms. Starnes to go ahead with this?
I mean, we've pretty much looked at this every, this is the cheapest, best option that gives us the most utility out of our money, I think.
Without using taxpayer money?
Yeah.
It's been studied for years.
I'll make a motion.
Darrell makes a motion that we approve this for Ms. Starnes. Do we have a second?
All second.
Is she added second? Any other further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, opposing.
Mr. Castile opposed, passes. Thank you very much. Ms. Stallard, now's the time on the agenda that we're going to discuss the, under unfinished business, the animal control. We all met with the animal control officer this week, and Ms. Starnes just wants to summarize what we learned from him.
After the concerns were brought up last month by Ms. Stallard, we met with Mr. Darty, who is our animal control officer, and he has summarized the issues that were brought forth. The abandoned dogs, that call was received in 2021, and he went to that residence, posted on the door the notice that was required by law, and then received another call a couple of days later from Ms. Stallard, that he had went back to the residence. She had the landowner there, and he took possession of those dogs at that time. There was a court case, and we received from there. Then there was a call on Great Pyrenees, about a Great Pyrenees in the winter of 2023. That issue was investigated as well and had been corrected by the owner, so there was no summons in the case. There was also a call in the summer of 2024 in reference to a, the same Great Pyrenees, about it being in a fenced lot without shelter. Mr. Darty went and saw the Great Pyrenees inside the lot. It had an approved doghouse and water available, and the dog could come and go as it pleased. The lot wasn't fully enclosed. It did have an opening in it. And the horses that was mentioned was in 2012, so that call was 12 years ago. Mr. Barker was the animal control officer at the time and took the initial call. The horses were being fed by Ms. Stallard, and it says, your neighbor, it's a, no charges were brought against the owner of the horses. The law is specific, and there were no violations of law in this case. And then there was a call regarding bison, they're, about them not being fed well and starving in the winter months. When Mr. Darty went to the farm, there were 14 bison in the field, seven rolls of hay were also there that they were eating on. We have talked to Mr. Darty about all of these situations. Anytime that we receive a complaint, we are following up with those. He reports directly to Mr. Dingus and then myself after that. When we get an initial call, the animal control officer will respond within a reasonable timeframe. If it is a situation where there is a bite, the health department is also involved. If it's an emergency, then, you know, residents are encouraged to call 911, but just a stray out on the road or those type of situations, those are not situations that are emergencies, and those are not recorded and followed up on on the weekends, but on Monday or as soon as possible. Animal cruelty, stray dogs, animal bites, just contact animal control. Their number is at the animal shelter, 452-1325. As far as assessments, the animal control officer will determine if the situation is an immediate life-threatening emergency, a non-life-threatening emergency, urgent or non-urgent, and prioritize the response accordingly. We only have one animal control officer in the county. We have a litter control officer that serves as his backup if he is on vacation or on another call. So we do have a lot of issues going on in the county with animal control, so we do have to prioritize the best they can to make sure that everything's covered. If the issue is minor, the animal control officer may provide educational advice and suggestions to the pet owner to resolve the problem amicably. And for more serious issues, citations, warnings, or legal action may be taken if necessary. When we receive complaints, they are followed up on either by Mr. Dingus or myself. A lot of times, what you are seeing in the community and reporting to us, a lot of times being taken care of. We're working with the follow-up on the, from the complainant to make sure that you do know that it is being taken care of. That is one of the things that we're working with the animal control officer on, doing a better job of. Stray dogs are held for six days, and I don't know if people watched the last meeting, but the board did make the decision on your dog tags. All dogs must have a license, which can be obtained at the treasurer's office, and we will be checking for those to make sure that you're, you do have your dog tag and you do have your rabies license, which you have to have before you can get the dog tag. Those fees will be going to help at the animal shelter. The board made that decision last month. There's a lot of reasons that, that dogs can be euthanized. That's something that we don't like to do at all. We have a very low euthanasia rate. This year's rate is 3.8%, and to be considered a no-kill shelter, that's anytime you're under 10%. So we are way below that percentage this year, and last year was 4%. This year's 3.8%. We try to do our best that no dogs have to be euthanized, but occasionally, if the shelter is at capacity or reaching capacity, that does have to happen, unfortunately. the shelter is at capacity or reaching capacity, that does have to happen, unfortunately. And as far as the concern that was brought earlier today about the 15-pound dog in Carter's Valley, we have received numerous calls about that dog, and they have been looked into. Animal control has been by that house many, many times and checked on this dog and has found no laws to have been broken with this specific dog. So if you have any questions from the board, let me know. But that's just a summary of the calls from last week, or from the concerns from last month, sorry.
Talking with Mr. Darty and the, and the meetings, he made it sound like it was pretty hard to get a, a solid conviction unless you had a really, you just absolutely slam dunk case of, of abuse going on here. So.
That seems to be the case with animal control and litter control. Anytime that we've had litter control cases as well go to the court, it's very hard to get the court system to have a conviction.
Yeah. And that falls back on to the judges themselves?
I think part of the issue is communication. The reporting process, if someone calls in, is it documented and a report is made about what action was taken? Is that always the case?
That is normally the case, especially if there's some sort of violation going on. You know, we, we may get calls about any situation, just a dog walking down the road. So, you know, they may check something out like that that's really not an incident, and they might not do an incident report on that. They, but, you know, they, they use the discretion on a case by case, much like an officer would, or, I mean, that's what they're acting as, as officers, you know. An officer, a, a police officer may not write down every encounter he has on the street unless there's an incident to report.
I think it's important that the complainants get a response. You know, some things we heard about the laws yesterday. You know, if they're aware, made aware of the laws, what they can do and can't do, that would go a long way. But they need to get the call back.
Yeah, we, we've made a concerted effort to do that, especially in the last couple of years.
The other side?
Can I say, Ms. Starnes says you have to have, you know, it's hard to get, or the gentleman with the beard, it's hard to get a, a conviction without proof. I had pictures of the dead buffalo that starved to death. I had pictures of the dead horse laying in the field. And I had pictures and also dates, everything written down about the three dogs left in the trailer for 10 days. I called every month for six months wanting to be included in that court case so he could get a conviction. But, and, and I was assured by Bill Dingus and Jake Darty that they would let me know when it was on the docket. And then the last time I called, that case is over. It's already been heard. So my pictures and my witness testimony was not heard. So I, I know that you have to have proof for a conviction, and I had the proof.
Any other comment? We'll move on then to new business, and we have with us from Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources, Mr. Mike Kender, aquatic biologist.
My name is Mike Kender, and I'm with the Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources. I thank the chairman and board for allowing me a chance to present my proposal. Before I start, I just want to give a basic overview of my agency. This looks a little bit disclaimer, but no, this is our mission statement. And we have three parts. The first is that we're the wildlife managers in Virginia. We cover blue gills to black bear. We're also the agency that encourages folks, especially our youth, to get out and enjoy the outdoors. We know that can be difficult during these times of electronic gadgets and everything. For wildlife viewing, fishing, hunting, trapping, and all sorts of things. We also want to make sure that all this is done safely, and you may, I may not have encountered our law enforcement division, and also to make sure that the conflicts between wildlife and humans are, can be resolved in a, in a conservation and suitable manner for both parties. I'm here today. Okay. One more thing is, the department and Scott counties have had a really good relationship over the years. And I'm mainly a person that deals with rivers and streams, so that's where I'm going to focus. You really can't find a, a county that has such an incredible resources in terms of where you can go fishing, from things like muskie, smallmouth bass, walleye, and get incredible, you know, diversity of fish out there when you go fishing. Something you never know what you're going to bring in. We have the Clinch River, 32 miles up, 42 miles of the Clinch, 32 miles of the North Fork, some of the most beautiful rivers you can find in the state. We work with the county to stock almost 25 miles of trout streams, and we stock over 46,000 trout in those streams annually. We have worked to provide access for, for anglers and boaters. In fact, just this last month, I met several, several folks in the board to, to bring in the new Rex Arena Fishing Access Area, which is at the mouth of the Clinch River in Copper Creek. It's a pleasure to meet everybody there. We're also, and the department are incredibly excited about this, just, when you look at the biological diversity that's found in this area. So you can see the map of the United States with all these different colors and, and peaks. The, the redder the color and the taller the peak indicates where the biological diversity is, concentrations are in the United States. In the eastern part of the United States, that, that one area that looks like a volcano, that's, that's Scott County. And Scott County is a special place, not just because we know it's a special place, but nationally and even worldwide. This has some of the highest diversity of, of things like freshwater mussels and fish got anywhere else. So, pretty remarkable place. And we have worked to do, to work to restore these areas. We have propagation facility for freshwater mussels in Marion, and we regularly augment these populations. We do a lot of education, a lot of education outreach, and work with farmers and such to, to promote best management practices in the area. Well, today, I'm here to talk about a proposal for the reintroduction of a fish called the spotfinchub. And I do this because my agency is just like the county, it's board-driven. We have a board. And, and one of the powers of the board is to reintroduce, introduce game birds and game animals and fish. And to do this, we need the authorization and the cooperation of the locality of where this introduction would occur. So a little bit about the fish that we're, we're talking about. This is called the spotfinchub, not a real fancy name. It's only about two and a half inch long minnow, and during the breeding season, it turns bright, bright blue. It almost looks like it's plugged into an electric boiler. The species, the first time it was ever discovered was here in southwest Virginia. It was found near Saltville. And these were early days when, when people, you had to get by train or, or covered wagon to get to these streams. You didn't have a car to do it. They are present in Scott County as we speak, but during the North Fork Holston, all the way up into Washington County. Now, this section, now where they like to live, they like to live in big rivers, big, the medium-sized rivers, not ditches and culprits or anything like that. Likes big rivers. Where you have these big sections of bedrock that cross, that cross the river. You know these sections if you fish any of these rivers. You can walk along those sections and, and catch some smallmouth bass and such. That's where they like to be. The species historically occurred both in the Clinch and the Powell Rivers, and it likely disappeared because of dams such as Norris Reservoir and, and water quality, just poor water quality in the past. So there's been a lot of work to improve water quality across the range, and I, I, you know, tip my hat to, to the farmers and other landowners working with best management practices to improve water quality. And there's been reintroduction efforts both in North Carolina and also Tennessee, where they can propagate these animals, establish these populations within historic range with the main goal of delisting animal. That's what we want. We want to get these species off, off an endangered species list. So here, you can see the map. You can see the area in green is where they currently occur in Scott County and also in Washington County. And the area in orange is, is area in the lower Clinch, from about Clinch Port down to the state line where we, we propose to put them. Now, these animals are propagated, can be propagated in a hatchery, and we have a hatchery that, that can do that work. Of course, we're working with state government, and we don't do anything fast. So even to do this work, it's going to take, very optimistically, you know, two years to start it, and up to 40 years to, to actually get it, get it rolling. So it's not something fast. Once we can start putting these animals in, it takes about 10 years to actually say, hey, what are they establishing? It'd be like, it'd be great if we could put them in one year and they come back and they're all established. But we give like a 10-year window of, hey, if we can't get them established in 10 years, it's not going to work out. We need, we need to move on to something else. And where does the money come from to do this work? It comes from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and we're the agency that the money would go through to do the work from Fish and Wildlife Service. And of course, with any type of work, there's benefits and there's concerns, and that's, and that's totally acceptable. The, the benefits with that, we'd be establishing a population within historic range, and that would be another population, we call it resiliency because it would help us go towards delisting animal. And we think we are close to delisting it. And of course, you know, big fish eat little fish. We all know that. And this is a little fish, and big fish will eat it, and other things will eat it. And that's good because the more they eat, the bigger the, the bigger the bass is going to get, and they're going to get nice trophy bass out of it, and that's fine. Also, there's a relationship between fish and freshwater mussels. It's kind of complicated, but mussels need fish in order to start their life cycle. And this is an animal that, that is also used as a host for many, for many mussels. So it's going to help, help in the encouragement of mussel production within the rivers. What are the concerns? Well, there are concerns. The species is part of the U.S. Endangered Species Act, and people do have concerns about projects, endangered species stopping or delaying projects. We work with the counties, we work with the VDOT, we work with all these other agencies, because we, we know that, you know, there's, there's a concern about we got to conserve the species, but the work has to get done too. And there's an human safety element has to get done. So we partner with these agencies to find, what can we do, and when can we do it in order to get both goals accomplished. I would say that in the Clinch River, though, we already have 19 mussels and four fish that are listed as endangered. There's this, this is like the central part where all the endangered mussels and fish occur. And so adding another species is really going to be very minimal impacts to, to an already crowded area with enlisted species. And of course, this is not the first time we've done this. We did something similar several years ago up in Smith County where we reintroduced a little catfish, I guess about three inches long, called the elephant mactom. And it was right near a Northwood Middle School, if you know where that is. And so we wanted to make a big deal of it, include, include the students and everything, and help us with it. So we had the students out there with, you know, each had a little jar of catfish. And, and these catfish hadn't been in there since 1888. And that was in Grover Cleveland was president, I found that out. And so we had the kids, each got to release a fish that was there, you know, way, way, way back. Great, 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 great grandparents were back there. And we even had Congressman Griffin out there, out there releasing a fish. You can see him in that picture, releasing one of the fish. So we had a lot of support. That's something that we could also do. People are interested in working with local schools and, and bringing back something that hasn't been back, you know, since the 1800s. So I went ahead and passed out that sheet, and I got it for more information if you'd like to have more information. There's a recovery plan for all species. There is also, you know, more information you can find online. I've worked in this area for 30 years, and, and I've worked with many, many people, and, and I'm always open to, to talking and, and discussing what we're doing. I say I work out of Blacksburg, but it takes me, it's the same distance to go from, from Blacksburg to Richmond to Blacksburg to Scott County. I'd much rather go to Scott County, on more benefits. So, anyway, that's my, that's my presentation. Is there any questions or comments?
So from us, what, do you need, do you need letter of support?
I would like that part where I would like to say, yes, we give you the authorization and, and support to move forward. That's, this is the first thing. I don't want to go and spend money and time to try to do this somewhere to, and then come back at the very end and say, hey, now can we do it? And then it's, no, we don't want to do it. And it's wasted a lot of money. I want to do it. This is the very first thing to do. And that's why it's in our, it's actually in our code on our board.
Got you.
Mr. Peter, I think all of our streams, you know, the boats in the Clinch, Copper Creek, Big Knox, and all of them are very close to us. I was raised 100 yards from Clinch River, and stayed on that river all the time when I was a kid and growing up.
Very much.
And is there any other discussion before, I guess we could do a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, a letter of support for this project and to authorize it.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Keen made the motion, Mr. Manis second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any more discussion?
Thank you, sir.
David Gilmer is, David Gilmer is here, but I think Ms. Starnes is going to do the next Scott County Rescue Squad Association funding request.
We have a funding request from the Scott County Rescue Squad Association to provide funding for their preventative maintenance contract on the Zoll Park monitors. There are 11 total in the county, three at Duffield Fire and Rescue, five at Scott County Life Saving Crew, and three at Nicholsville Rescue Squad. The total amount for the maintenance would be $3,740. If this is something that you wish to fund, we can take that out of Fund 1050 Regional Improvement Commission funds. Just let me know if you've got any questions.
Okay, any questions, Ms. Starnes, on this?
How long is this for? Is this just for a year?
One year.
One year?
Any other comments or questions? Do we have a motion? To approve this? Okay, motion by Mr. Manis to approve this Rescue Squad Association request. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Jeter, second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
Next on our agenda, next item is information technology policies, and this is also Ms. Starnes.
On your tablet, you have four policies that our IT manager has requested that you implement. One is a remote access policy. One is a remote access policy. The second is an incident response training policy, an acceptable use policy, and a backup and recovery policy.
Any questions on these four items? Do we have a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Manus made the motion, Ms. Addington. Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay. Next up, I suppose, are the bookkeeping items?
Legislative priorities.
I'm sorry, legislative priorities. And be Ms. Darnes also.
We've had some discussion at previous meetings about setting legislative priorities for the 25, 2025 legislative session in Richmond. I have put together some just for your thoughts. Some of these you may want to send on, some you may not. And then if you have priorities of your own that you would like the board to consider adding, just let me know that as well. First one that I have is unfunded mandates. As you know, the Commonwealth is very good at funding things and passing them on to the county. As unfunded mandates, it's requirements from the state that we have to do and don't have any other option. Those are what's considered unfunded mandates. The second one would be teacher raises. When those are offered, they need to be fully funded by the Commonwealth, not passed on as a match to the county. The third would be the Commonwealth's looking options to support the development of workforce housing, which would be considered middle-income housing. There are a lot of programs in the state for housing for low income, but there's nothing substantial to support that workforce housing. So, that would, I feel like that would be a good thing for the state to take a look at. Also, to support the inland port in southwest Virginia. This has been discussed for a couple of years now with Washington County being the site that they are talking about. So, I think if the county could do support for the inland port in southwest Virginia, it'd be a huge win for our manufacturing facilities that we have in the county as well as those around us in the region. School resource officers should be made compensation board positions. We currently have two SRO grants. This would help, I'm sure statewide, if the compensation board would pick up the SRO positions. The legislation to allow counties to have a 1% additional sales tax by referendum. This had a lot of support in the 2024 legislative session, but didn't quite get there. I think this would be a good option for the counties in Virginia to be able to have that 1% additional sales tax, but it would be by referendum. The citizens would have to vote for that and approve it. Additional funding for VDOT for unpaved roads. Increased funding so that the compensation board employee benefits are covered by the Commonwealth instead of localities. As you know, the compensation board employees are covered by the state, but their benefits are covered by the localities. They only pay a very, very small portion of benefits for their employees. And also, an increase for the For4Life funding to support EMS. That hasn't been increased in quite some time. We only get around $23,000 to be divided between our three squads. And For4Life funding, I would like to see some support for increasing that as well. So, those are the ones that I have. We can take any of those off and then add yours. So, this is just open for discussion.
I think Michelle had one that she wanted to add on here that we're going away from comments, but I think this is actually a better place for it to be thought about.
Whenever I went and had the meeting yesterday, we were talking about that. But, I apologize to Stephanie and Daryl and Eddie, I didn't get to speak with you guys ahead of me speaking, but this is something that's near and dear to me. And I had a phone call last night that was, you know, I wasn't expecting this phone call. We get phone calls all the time, you know, with road, you know, VDOT help and all this good stuff. But, last night I got a phone call from a couple that live in Hiltons in my district. And it was about a two-hour phone call. And I had spoke to everyone prior to this phone call about getting, senior citizens getting help. Or, you know, single parents getting help. But, you know, today, you've got to contact the social services and you've got to go there, and you've got to fill out a book pretty much of everything that you own, your vehicles, your home, how much your prescriptions, you know, you pay in prescriptions, your copays, how much you spend on copays, and all this good stuff. But, the more I look into this and I see that we do have issues with the economy the way it is right now, prices of food and healthcare, prescriptions and all this, that's just ahead of everybody. You know, when you go to get help, the income level is set so high that these people cannot get help in our county. And it breaks my heart that, you know, some of these people are going without because they can't afford things. And I think that we need to send a letter to Terry Kilgore and to Todd Pillion and have them to look at these income levels for the senior citizens and single-family households that, you know, are struggling today because they can't afford, you know, to put groceries on their table. But, I would really love to have the board's support in sending this letter to get them to look at the income level that, you know, is set for right now and maybe lower that income level. But, and take into regards that, you know, higher costing copays, higher costing prescription drugs, higher costing groceries, electric bills, water bills, just look at all of that and just take in consideration and look at it and maybe lower that income level.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to even have a slope. Right now, it's a cliff. You either get it or you're done.
Right.
And there would be, it'd be nice to just get a little belt somewhere in the middle there.
100% agree with you.
Most of it is always that you miss it by about $200.
Yeah.
And it looks to me like it's kind of a set-up system to make sure that you don't get it. Because I've seen it time after time again. It's like I said, you just miss it by very little.
I think all these are important to, actually, to the point of getting something based down before January.
Yes, I wanted to get these today so that we could send them to Mr. Kilgore and Mr. Pillion before the governor does his budget.
I was even thinking about you going to Richmond, knocking on some doors and presenting some of these things that you mentioned, even prior to January.
Okay.
The 1%, is that for school new construction, 1% additional sales taxes?
Yes, I believe that's the way they were presenting that.
That's only there to use for.
Has that been approved by the state? It's just up to us to do it?
It hasn't been. It didn't pass. It did have a lot of support, but didn't get through.
I think VACO was really supporting that too.
Two other items, I think. The economic development aspect, and I don't know how all of that plays out, but Mr. Jeter mentioned last month, the lack of funding for the county and for incentive packages and the cell tower coverage. I think you've done a little work on that already.
I have.
Do you want to just cover the other spots on that?
I have that in my miscellaneous, but I'll go ahead.
Well, I just wondered if we need to have that on the list.
I can put cell towers.
Number four, inland port, do we need to go ahead and do a letter of support for that, Ms. Darnes? Now?
I think we can incorporate our priorities into a letter and list them all.
Okay.
But, if there's any of the ones I mentioned, you won't take them out. Just let me know. We can take those out. Those were just some that I had thought of and made note of.
I don't think we want to take any of them out.
No, I think you've done a good job. They're all needed.
It'd just be difficult to cover all that in two or three days in Richmond. That's why I was saying you might want to do some.
Send a letter and get it in their heads now.
It also needs to go to the governor because he will be working on his budget and presenting that in December.
When I was campaigning, cell towers was one of the main things that I heard out through the county because a lot of the citizens older. And then a lot of people said, is that out? Working, turned the tractor over, got hurt. Maybe they'd have their cell phone with them too, they could get somebody to them. Most of them said, if I'm back here by myself, who's going to know I'm back here somewhere? The chances of a bind, it was probably too late. I'd have to say I second that too.
There's a lot of work going on in the industry right now to get forging from lower orbit without any additional ground construction.
Starlink?
Other companies like Starlink. Apple already offers a satellite text message and like an emergency alert that'll send out your coordinates and the message to EMS services. Android just integrated that into their devices here too. And I don't know, cell coverage is an issue, but I don't know that what it won't resolve itself. But, I'm an optimist on technology. So, I think we should cover it, but just be careful if we add money to that because I don't know what that might come off to. Just my personal opinions. As someone who keeps up with the industry.
Can we leave this in the legislative items to Ms. Darnes to maybe combine all these into a letter to send to Terry and Todd and the governor before January?
Yeah, and I think it would, you know, prove us if we have any connections or special interests that we want to do, that we should go to Pillion and Kilgore ourselves and, you know, advocate for these things. So, you know, just because us as a board, corporate board, is sending a letter doesn't mean we can't be, you know, individual activists as well.
I'll send the letter and then follow up with each of them with the in-person meeting and talk to them about what we, our concerns are and have formulated in the letter.
You know, looking at these 10 things, and we won't have to do this, but wouldn't it be hard to prioritize the most important things on here? They're all important. They really are. And you did a good job bringing them together for me. And Michelle, Ms. Glover, what you did is great. Any other, anything else that we might want to include on this or let Ms. Darnes know later?
Please don't take off the dirt roads.
We're not going to.
It's on there.
It's an issue all through Virginia. I've been talking to several other counties through VACO, and they're all having issues with it as well. The fund hasn't been increased since 2017, and we've had outrageous inflation. So, it just means there's less that we can do with that money. So, it needs to be increased. The big thing is, is getting VDOT to agree where that money's going to come from. Because they get a bucket and they get to allocate where that money goes to. And we need to have a serious conversation between us and our legislators and VDOT and say, this bucket needs to be increased. We don't care where you get it from, you got to get it from somewhere.
Peggy, I know you've worked for the past two or three years from us. It's not us, it's Richmond.
And that's the truth. It is Richmond. But, keep it up. And if there's anything in Richmond that we can bring you in on, I would love to take you up there and let them talk to somebody that has been an advocate of this.
And then you can invite them down and ride them around on all these dirt roads.
Oh, I think that would be good too.
I think that's absolutely a perfect idea.
Take them through there about 60 mile an hour. Oh, shoot, I forgot we're on camera here.
Hey, Peggy, your probably top speed would be 20, almost.
That'd be so sure.
Any other comments on the legislative priorities? If not, we'll move on to bookkeeping items.
Please appropriate $361.52 to park golf course merchandise for resale. 1,000-71110-406009 for reimbursement received deposit at the treasurer's office. And appropriate $2,615.11 to sheriff's office conferences and training. 1,000-31200-405540 for reimbursements received deposit at the treasurer's office. And please establish fund 1671 AFCA grants and create miscellaneous grant revenue code
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the appropriations.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And I'll make a motion to approve the grant as stated by Ms. Amy Vickers.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that as well.
Okay, Ms. Addington made the motion, Mr. Manus second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay.
Do you not want a board action on the legislative priorities or not needed? I was just wanted to ask.
It would be good. That way, it gives it teeth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, let's back up to legislative action. Do we have a, do we have a motion to approve these for Ms. Darnes to work on?
Yep. Make a motion.
I'll second that.
Mr. Manus made the motion, Ms. Glover second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good job, thank you. Okay, we're over. Down to number 11 on the agenda appointments. Tina?
We have one appointment to the tourism committee, and you have one applicant Roger Carter has been serving. He did reapply.
I'll nominate Roger Carter.
I'll make the motion that nomination ceased and may vote by acclamation.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Jeter, second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. Roger Carter, pointing to the tourism development committee. County attorney's report.
I don't have anything to add to my report in your packets. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Ms. Kegley?
Appreciate all your hard work on these cellular regulations. I know it's been a headache to sort through everything and figure out what other counties are doing, but I think we've landed at a good spot that works for this county.
I appreciate it, with the energy, right? Fellow, Mr. said that it's a reasonable ordinance. We're not doing anything beyond what needs to be done in our ordinance. I worked on that, worked hard to find that balance and appreciated him recognizing that. So, I also, you know, with a lot of things that the government does, we, when we follow the law for notice to the public on ordinances or anything else, that doesn't always come across to the public as enough. But, we are always following what we're required to do to let the public know about ordinances, public hearings, anything else. We don't do the bare minimum for that either. So, I just wanted to make that clear. We are always in compliance, if not more so.
Thank you for that too.
He came up and spoke to us during the break, and he was very complimentary of what we did and said that it could probably be replicated by the county. So, that's a credit to you and the planning commission. Good job.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the county administrator's report.
We'll start with claims and green sheet in your extra package.
We'll start with claims and green sheet in your extra packet. The general fund balance after claims is $5,650,336. As you can see by your comparison report, we're just a little ahead of where we were at this time last year. As far as claims, early sets for the month totaled $851,163.81. Current claims are $365,370.57. Total claims for the month, $1,216,534.38. You have a list of all claims over $5,000. If you want to look through those and see if you have any questions.
Most pretty little better shape. Explanation of that, that's probably.
I'm glad we are.
I didn't know where somebody had to draw the money or something.
Um, no, we're probably about the same. Um, the school system usually doesn't draw anything until January, just because they give us time for the tax money to come in. Um, our investments are going well, um, so that could be part of the difference that you're seeing a little more money this time of year, because those are doing well.
Mr. Helms has also increased his efforts on trying to get the windmill tax with his credit.
Right.
Mr. Helms, revenue, is it anywhere? It's just, you put that number now, do you know?
I don't have that right off the top of my head. It's usually running between $40,000 and $50,000 a month on the interest.
On the interest?
So, that adds up month to month.
That is awesome.
Mr. Skeen, were you asking about the interest or?
Interest.
That's awesome. What's the largest expanded, expanded issue?
Schools.
Schools. For sure.
So does anybody have any questions on the $5,000 and over list? If not, total claims for the month to approve today is $1,216,534.38.
Do we have a motion?
Still no.
Mr. Jeter made the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Glover, second, all in favor, see if I can say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I have a couple of things under my miscellaneous. Uh, in your packet, extra packet, you have a letter of support that Leno Wisco has requested for the U.S. Department of Transportation's Charging Fueling and Infrastructure Discretionary Grant Program application. Scott County is included in this grant application for charging stations for electric vehicles. And so their grant deadline's coming up, and they have requested this letter of support. If you want to take a minute to look over that and approve if it's your desire to do so.
Does it require any money from us?
It doesn't.
All right, free money. I think every dollar they will invest in Scott County.
Any questions on the letter?
I'll make a motion if we send it.
Motion made by Mr. Manis, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Yes, still second, all in favor, see if I can say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Send the letters.
Next, I wanted to talk about mini cell towers. Mr. Skeen has mentioned these a couple of times, and I have reached out to a couple of people, and I'll let you know what I have found out. Lee County did implement some of the AT&amp;T mini cell towers back several years ago. They used their ARCA CARES Act money to buy the equipment from AT&amp;T. They have a range of a quarter of a mile to one and a half mile coverage radius. The cost is about $60,000 per unit. They are placed on telephone poles. Um, they have to have equipment installed on them to get the, to be operational. And I also found out, um, there has to be broadband fiber connectivity, and they do provide limited cell coverage. The majority of the citizens in Scott County utilize Verizon, so at this point, we're unsure of the compatibility with other carriers such as AT&amp;T that Lee County used. And there is currently a VCC wireless assessment being done that will be sent to Leno Wisco, and we will receive a copy of that in the near future. It also will include some information regarding the Lee County projects. Another person had sent me some more information about the Lee County sites. Those were in 2020, and that was when the school system were doing their classes and stuff from home, and they didn't have, you know, the capability with the wifi and the cell coverage to get that done. It's why Lee County, I believe, implemented the project. Um, there's not really a process if our locality is interested. Basically, it comes down to being able to fund these on the local level. And like I said, $60,000 to $80,000 per site. And I believe Dunn Ganon would require five. Do you remember if that's correct?
He, he thought two would cover, but I guess the town for it.
So, you know, it is an expensive, uh, project, um.
Is there maintenance costs associated with this? How, how does that work? Do we build a little tower and then we let people put their radio equipment on there?
It's, it's a telephone pole.
Yeah, it's on the telephone pole. Lee County worked in partnership with Scott County Telephone. They were a major partner with them. And I've got some information about that, let me find.
Sorry.
The county, this is Lee County. They use their ARCA funding and CARES Act to purchase the equipment from AT&amp;T. Although AT&amp;T still maintains ownership of the equipment to ensure their integration into the network. They worked with their local LEC, which is Scott County Telephone, to build out the fiber power backhaul to each site. Um, Scott County Telephone was a major partner, and they used state funding, VATI, B-A-T-I, to cover that portion of the project cost. The maintenance and network integration costs of the equipment are managed by AT&amp;T.
So, we basically, we purchase some equipment and then give it into AT&amp;T?
Yeah, because they still maintain ownership. I guess we're just paying for the equipment to be installed there.
I mean, I get, I get why they could do that, but I, I don't know that, because that sounds kind of weird.
Sorry, has Lee County paid an assessment on them? Do they like it?
I haven't talked to Lee County directly.
I've got a question. How far does our SCTC network reach out to? You can get wifi collie from it, or wifi, hook up the wifi will come in and do whatever you need to do.
That's just for like personal and business use? This is for, you know, for modern coverage for cell phones? I, I understand what you're saying.
I use wifi collie where I live, I'm on that SCTC.
Yeah, but you don't live in the rest of county, and it won't pick up probably 40 feet from your house.
Yeah, but you could do your homework if you go to school.
Yeah, but it won't, if you're somewhere out in the field working or somewhere else, or if it didn't work probably 40 to 50 feet around your house.
That's why you have Verizon Towers.
Can you get us some here? I'd appreciate them if you can, because I've tried and tried and tried for several years.
Well, you know, that's an interesting suggestion, because they just built one in Lynchport here, nine, what, two months ago?
Yeah, just.
And, uh, it might be worth reaching out to the developer there and seeing if what they need. From what I understand, they're just looking for land at this point. Scott County is pretty saturated, like you said.
Yeah. I don't think they're looking to expand Scott County's horizon, because they had a site in Snowflake. They had a, a site in Snow, Snowflake, and they, they backed away from it.
But I tried T-Mobile.
I thought that was because.
First year.
Okay. Here, here, okay.
Yes, and I, this never got no response, okay? It seemed like T-Mobile's been working pretty good through the county, but it don't work half as good after the leaves gets out on the trees. And the service is, ain't half as good as it is after the leaves fall. Now, you're over there towards Corlors Valley, and I'll, it really works good, but on over in the rural part of the areas, it don't seem to really work. And Dunn Ganon, uh, anything for Snowflake on toward Nicholsville, and I'm sure that Mr. Manis's areas.
That's Fairview.
Now, Fairview, um, it don't work, because I'm down in there too.
It doesn't work.
It's estimated that half the county does not have service, cell service.
You ought to have a high-dollar cellphone too to pick up wifi.
Oh, okay. This proposal just seems too expensive, though, to me.
So that's the information I have gained on mini cell towers. Um, I'll move on with my other miscellaneous items. Um, we have TVA training October the 9th, please add that to your calendar. It will be Scott County EDA, Scott County Board of Supervisors, Lee County IDA, and Lee County Board of Supervisors. Uh, that training, uh, has a dinner at 5:30 with training at 6 o'clock. And we also received a Virginia Association of Counties Achievement Award for the Scott Service Program. I would like to thank Stephanie for spearheading that for us this year. So VACO will be here at an upcoming meeting to present you with that award. And I would like to also congratulate Pam Cox. She was, she received the Outstanding Tourism Leader Award this year, and that was presented to her in, earlier in August. So big congratulations to Pam for that award.
She's been working hard.
And that's all I have under miscellaneous.
Okay, next on the agenda is County Department of Port, Mr. John Kilgore.
Still morning. Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to present today, and appreciate, again, appreciate your service on more supervisors. It's, uh, most of the time you don't get any thank yous, so I'm thanking you now, because, you know, you put in more hours, and I know that from working with four supervisors in the past, and you all as well. You go to meetings that people don't realize you're at a meeting, so I do appreciate what you're doing for the county. And, uh, if you're looking at the numbers again for economic development, we've had one new prospect, and we continue to work with four active prospects, and that, that does not count the many leads that we have as well. But also focus on the, if you go to the right of that first page, is the, uh, we've assisted with six ribbon cuttings for small businesses. And first, there at the top is Holston Medical Group. That was the new diagnostic center, which is the first one in southwest Virginia. That's a, almost a $1.5 million investment that HMG's making. They actually located there in 2006 and put, built a new facility there, but also, people don't realize, they also built a ATAC Center, which is their backup data center, and that is behind the HMG. And that was the first commercial tier-three certified data center in the United States. And that is located there behind their facility, a lot of people don't know that. Uh, there was only four in the world at the time, and of course, there's more tier-three certified now, but they were the first to kind of kick that off. They used to be located in, in Johnson City, and then they moved to that facility there, so that's where they backup their online medical records. With a doctor group of over 100 doctors in their group, and I understand they just added another, uh, group, and a group of doctors in North Carolina as well. So they continue to grow. Also had the Redstone, which is good to see them back open, and the Redstone Drive-In, as we all know it, and used to go there and get ice creams a lot. And also the 23 Axe, Axe store and facility down in River City. We have Copper West Spa and Salon here in Gate City. And then, of course, the Devil's Bathtub, and so y'all attended that. The ribbon cutting there, the improvements on the trail, and then we have a new state forum office here in Gate City. So all those are great new additions to Scott County, and it's great to see, uh, if you want a diagnostic center, you know, if you need a test done, maybe you can go to Duffield. Now, you don't have to go to Bristol, or you don't have to go to Kingsport, you can go to Duffield and get that scheduled. I know that Penny's already tested that out, so she's already been down there for a test, so, uh, she's applauding that, it's really good. Then we have, also, we're working with seven potential seed capital applications to the Virginia COVID Economic Development Authority Seed Capital Program. Some of those may apply for loans through us, we have not received any of those yet, but they could, you know, apply for the grant and then also apply for the loan, because we need the same information. They, they're required to do a business plan and, and provide financials and all that to VCD. And that goes through the Small Business Development Center. Small Business Development Center keeps all that information confidential for those businesses. Then they bring us that, and then, uh, then we consider a potential loan, or we consider, consider a letter of support to VCD. So in our next meeting, all those seven, or if we have six or seven, whatever that number is, we'll consider all those at the September meeting of the EDA. And some of that, well, I've already hashed out, and in the, in the last meeting, we had 10 manufacturing expansions. And I'll tell you on the expansions, expansion states has much time on those jobs and investment as it does in you, in you county. They take the same amount of time, you're still working with the state, you're still working with the region on, on those expansions. So we, we've had those in, in the past. Now, if you look at the next page, you'll look at the 20 years, you know, 20 years seems to be that number everybody goes to of what the investment is. This is the private investment over a 20-year period from 2004 to 2024. That's over $116 million, and the jobs is 1,482, 1,482. And if you look at some of the stats that we also keep is on the unemployment rate. We all, we always are a little bit higher than the state on unemployment rate, maybe a couple of months out of the year we're not. But right now, the unemployment rate in Scott County is 3.4%, and Virginia's is 2.7%. As you well know, Virginia's was selected as the number one state for business, and we want to keep it that way and continue to support our businesses and continue to work not only with the, uh, our regional businesses, as Mike talked about earlier, but also with the ones in the county. Uh, and I also mentioned our Regional Industrial Facilities Authority that Mike already alluded to is the governor and delegate Kilgore participated in that ribbon cutting on, uh, August the 9th at EarthLink, and that is a regional site in Norton, right off of 23. Going, going over there to college, I thought, well, that's just a rock wall that will never be developed. So now you can go by and you can see a building just right there, right beside the highway. Great site for us, and great for us to be a participant in that. Other things, uh, free to mention about the TVA Economic Development Training, uh, they provide that training for us free of charge, they don't charge us for that. They'll come in, they have a, a staff member out of Nashville coming, of course, our regional representative is Tim Tidwell, he'll come along on that train as well. So they're offering that to Lee and Scott County, those in the TVA area. And I urge you to participate in that, because you always learn something at those, at those types of training. Also, the Carter Foal, we, we've been helping with their 50th anniversary. Their online sales for those special shows have been up, they went up 100%, online sales, 100%. I was just at the, uh, I was at the doctor for my father-in-law recently, and there was a traveling nurse there, and he, and he moved here, and I thought, well, that's cool. He said, I came from Florida and I'm, I'm living here now. And I asked him about the Carter Foal, and he said, oh yeah, I already bought my ticket for Marty Stewart. Fole, and he said, oh yeah, I've already bought my ticket from Marty Stewart. And that was cool to hear it at the hospital, you know, when you were there, but already from Marty Stewart, 300 tickets have already been sold, and that's not until October the 4th. They have a special show on the November 9th with the Cricket Road. The Cricket Road actually started at the Carter Fole, and that was their first meeting, so they'll be celebrating their 20th year and Carter Fole's 50th year, that'll be on November the 9th. So that'll be a special show for that. So hopefully, some of y'all can come out to that, and if you come out, please let Rita know, you know, she always recognizes people from the county if you're there, or people from the state, and please let her know if you're there, or let me know if I'm there. I'm always there for the special shows, and I don't always get there for those regular shows on Saturday night. Yeah, I got a family to keep up to, so any questions about anything that I presented so far.
John, thank you for being out there and being down on the ground and finding those warm opportunities. I know it's a hard job to do to sell this county, but I can see y'all working at it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Did you have some other things you're going to go over?
You said so far.
No, no, if you have any questions, I'll answer that.
Ms. Orange did mention the inland port.
Right.
Probably a little early, but how's that going to affect your recruiting?
The inland port will really help. The port of Virginia, what happens in Duffy and a lot of southwest Virginia, a lot of southwest Virginia and up near Tennessee, they're using the port in Charleston, because it's closer. So if we got an inland port here, they could drop it there, and then it would go directly to Virginia Port, which will help the Virginia Port traffic. Virginia is the deepest port, it's the only port that can be expanded on the East Coast, and of course, it's the number two port, it's behind New York, and then you've got Charleston and Savannah that are down through there as well. But that would really help Virginia and it would really help them grow. So it could help a Eastman, it could help a Temper, it could help those that are getting things from overseas, for sure. And it probably could help our wood industry around here as well, because a lot of that goes overseas.
I got a request from the Scott County Horse Association about the property there next to the, along Cup Creek. They added the national event, taking score points on one of the classes they have. They have people come from five states, so they've run out of camping space, and they were asking about that lot there, two or three acres, that's on Cup Creek Road in 72.
They haven't been to, they did come to the board, it's been a few years back, they haven't been there lately. I confirmed that with Roger to see if they'd ask him anything about that, and they haven't been there lately to ask that. But all they had to do is come to the board meeting and request that, and I'm sure they would consider that, but we haven't had that lately.
The last meeting, we had some discussion about economic development. You mentioned the last 20 years. All the supervisors here except one said they're getting questions about it on a regular basis. And no one could think of anything that had been new business or industry that had been recruited in the last 20 years. Mr. Jeter mentioned, we don't have the incentive package to attract those people. Could you comment on that?
Hold on, before you do comment, who was the one that...
Mr. Bricky.
I haven't heard anything about that either, so that'd be two. It'd be two out of five. Yeah, about the expansion in Duffield.
Now, the question was, are you getting any questions about economic development in Scott County?
Okay.
That was the question. Mr. Bricky said he didn't.
I said it's a vague question, you can't really put a, yeah.
Sorry, John.
Everybody asked that.
As a problem, we do have, the incentive that we use all the time is the enterprise zone. So we have a state designated enterprise zone. And one thing the county did in the last seven years or so, they expanded the enterprise zone to include US 23, and it also includes 71, Route 71 and Route 72, so along those corridors, which was a good move for the county, so we can, you know, offer incentives there that we haven't been able to in the past. Normally, that was only around Duffield. We only had enterprise zone in Duffield, and we did expand that, and it does include the data centers. We've got a data center incentive that Freda has mentioned before, and the whole region has done that. We have the lowest data center rate in the state, unless Loudoun has changed their data center, you know, as far as tax rate. We don't know that right now, but we did have the lowest, so they were talking about lowering their tax rate. So we do have some incentives. Do we have enough? I don't know. A good incentive won't buy a project. It's always good to have the good land, good infrastructure and all that. So incentive, you know, that's just maybe a given at the end. If a company comes in and they like you, like a temper, they decide to locate here because we had land, that's why Temper's here, that's why Comatsu's here, that's why BMP's here. They're here because we had the land or the building, and that's why they located here.
So you're saying it's a complete package?
Yes, it's not just one or the other, it's a complete package, yes.
And then workforce development, I'm sure is part of that.
It's really high on their list now, yes. Priority is workforce. Do we have the workforce? Are we getting close to full employment? You know, when you have a three, 3.9, what was that?
3.4.
3.4 unemployment rate. I've got that, never make sense, 3.4 unemployment rate, you're getting close to full employment.
One of the things that we identified with the legislative session, state incentives. What's the best approach to get more state incentives for economic development?
I think they've done a lot. They have the back commission, you also have the Virginia, I mean, the Caulfield, not the Caulfield, you have the regional fund, that too, but you have the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund from the state. You have incentives if they're doing rail access funding, if they need rail access, you have that fund. You have road access funding, so there's all kinds of packages you can put together the state can to help with a project. So if there's something new, the enterprise zone came out in the 80s, and that was a good incentive to add to it. The opportunity zone came out from the federal government, that's, we have an opportunity zone in Weber City at the Riverside property, that was a federally designated zone. So it's, those are all good, and hopefully, if there's something new that you can think of, we'll be glad to talk to the legislature about that. They've been doing well with their incentives. They wouldn't be the number one state for business if they didn't have a good incentive program.
And most of this, from my understanding, now you can correct me if I'm wrong, but most of the incentives at the state level would be regional level incentives, so it wouldn't just be targeted to Scott County or even the Lynn Whisco area. You're talking about everything from Roanoke down to the tip of the Kent Run.
What was the EDA involvement in recruiting Dollar Tree in Duffield?
We were involved in that. I worked, we worked with a consultant, and we worked with them. They'd actually called us initially, and we talked to them about the location there, and of course, they had a, some environmental, some DEQ concerns, and we had to work with Senator Penn's office on that. And, you know, in site plans and things, we were handing off to our building inspector. So there's a lot of things that we were doing on the project and a lot of things you didn't see.
The Firestone Building in Weber City, is there anything that you can report on that, on the three bay?
You mean the five bays.
Five bays.
That is, that's under negotiations on the board, and I'll leave it at that.
In going through this and possibly, you know, calling on the county to do financing on projects in the future, I've started doing a lot of research on the Dunn Ganon project, Mount Top Timber. Are there any assets left in that that could be sold?
Is it not?
If you have anything that you can comment about that, or any assets, or anybody you've talked to, I would urge you to talk to the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, because that's an open case and a pending case, and I'm not going to comment on the pending case.
So machinery is still part of the pending case, the sale of machinery. Was there an option?
I'm not going to talk about a pending case.
There was no option there?
I'm not going to talk about a pending case.
Okay. That's all I have.
John, the Riverfront property, anything that's, you've heard, talked, anything going on with the property down there, the building or anything like that?
Yeah, we do have an active prospect on there, that's one of the four I talked about, so.
No, I've mentioned it a time or two. I think that maybe urgent care or some type of thing would be a good thing for that.
Yeah, we did, back in the day, we had urgent care at Holston Medical Group in Weber City, if you remember that. Evidently, that didn't get enough traffic or whatever, so now that's in Kingsport. So I don't know, maybe we could get that in Duffield or somewhere else in the county might work better, but we're so close to Kingsport on the urgent care, it's hard on this end, but maybe another avenue would be another location.
If you would mind, you should come out to the next EDA meeting, we'll sit in on their session and talk with them. They'll, they can talk a lot more freely, but I think it'd be very important.
Any other questions of Mr. Kilgore? Good job, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Any, excuse me, Hour 15, board members, comments, requests or recommendations? You covered yours already, didn't you, Miss Webber?
I do, I do have my normal recommend, report. VDOT, you only did that now?
Yes, good.
The VDOT recap, stale work orders, that's where there've been, delayed two or more weeks. I've got the seven calls this month, and they're being addressed by VDOT, and Ms. Tyse mentioned one that she got a call on this morning. Orange bags, no delays in reporting any pickups, so that's going smoothly. The mowing of primary roads, all secondary cycles, second cycle has been completed. Secondary roads, Fort Blackmore crews are mowing right hoed in the last two weeks. Patinsville crews, and it might be over your way as well. Weber City, Gate City, Yuma, and starting on 23 and Spears Ferry. I don't know if that goes down Carter Valley, but they've been in...
Patinsville's crews usually stay on the right-hand side of 23 going that way.
I'm a board member of that code, that's old RADA. They have some new programs coming down on first-time homeowners, some incentive packages. They've got two or three that they'll be going through, and I'll meet with them, but I'd like for them, maybe once they get working through it, make a presentation to the board, I think there's some opportunity in the county for first-time home buyers. People down in Daniel Boone, September 16 is the target date for the railroad crossing for the sewer line, so that's coming within the next two weeks.
While you're on the PSA board, is there any information you can share on status of Robinette Valley and the Parry-Green project?
There's good news on Robinette Valley from Lynn Whisco, and I think that's going to be presented at our PSA board meeting next week. The other one was...
Second.
I don't have anything new on that. Robinette Valley's a good, good prospect there.
That's it all. Anyone else?
I've got one thing, Mike. There was a truck from Tennessee pulled into the Yuma site yesterday. I got a phone call on it, and they brought a whole trailer load and filled the blue dumpster up. What we can do about it?
Be over, Mike. No, no, don't you be.
Do you know about what time?
No, she didn't say. The person called me. Some of them was out there emptying their trash, and they called me, told me it was Tennessee tags, had a trailer behind the truck, and they filled the whole blue dumpster up, that whole furniture stuff. They had...
Is that wood products, the blue?
Do what?
Is that wood products?
Housewives.
Housewives. Oh.
If you could get a timeframe, they've got the cameras at the site that they could go through and try to get that tag number and contact those people.
Do you know what time of day, about what time of day?
Just ask, if she, if you could get her phone number and call her back, and just ask her and get the time, then you can contact Creek Reveal, and then they can look at it, because that also happened at Hilton's site, and we contacted the people and told them not to be doing that.
Any other comments? Okay, we need to go into closed session. We have two items to go.
Well, let's see, I did have one thing, 15A.
What did you add?
There was a closed session topic, Ms. Kegley, I had a question for Ms. Kegley. Were there any items, topics discussed in the last closed session that would have been the August meeting that were not identified prior to going into closed session?
No.
So the, the visitor from the EDA was part of the, in the discussion about relationships between the two boards, was that part of the closed session topics?
Your closed session, I don't remember exactly what it, if that was prospective industry or...
That was prospective industry, but also, we did veer off into talking about the relationship between the two boards and how that could affect the prospective industry.
I think that was the intent of, one of the pieces of that closed session was the discussion on relationships, and I didn't see that in the topics for going into closed session.
That just came up as a byproduct of prospective industry.
Is that okay to do that?
You all certified last month that it was okay.
But if that hadn't happened, is that, would that have been okay? To have talked about something in closed session that wasn't one of the topics?
It was related, it was...
It was related to the...
It was part of the topic of prospective industry to talk about EDA and how the two boards interact concerning prospective industry.
And then we...
That was okay, and you all certified it was okay.
Yeah, we're, at the end, we're the authority on that, so if you didn't feel like it was, you know, related to closed session.
I bet it was, or we wouldn't have talked about it.
Okay. We will go into closed session. We have two items to go into closed session concerning number five, prospective industry at Weber City and Duffield. We need a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make that motion.
Manis made the motion, we need a second.
Danny's second.
Danny Castillo's second. Our motion by Mr. Manis, due to second by Mr. Manis, this board hereby enters into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711. All in favor, signify, say aye. Now, proposed, go into closed session.